It works.
Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August the 12th, 2024. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization they represent, and their address unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and the items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of the council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our City Council meeting on Monday, August 12th, 2024, is the Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Washington and members of the council. It is once again my pleasure to stand before you to announce the May 2024 Mayor's Award of Excellence winner Kurt Helgath, who is a network supervisor with our Information Services Division here at the city. Kurt was nominated by LNKTV's manager Beau Wolfe in the categories of loss prevention and customer relations for his extensive efforts to upgrade LNKTV's fiber optic connectivity. And those efforts began early in 2024 when Kurt and his team started planning a new fiber optic connection to support live video feeds. And over the course of several months, Kurt identified and mapped a route consisting of over eight miles of fiber optic cable. With this new fiber optic connection, LNKTV can now host and stream secure, stable, and high-definition video feeds from our community partners at Nebraska Public Media, the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and Lincoln Public Schools. And so a really great example of the impact that Kurt's work has had comes from LPS's high school graduation this past spring. Thanks to this new fiber optic network, which now includes a connection with Pinnacle Bank Arena, LNKTV was able to broadcast every LPS high school graduation ceremony live on our city's education channel. And as a result, an average of 2,300 viewers per graduation were able to tune in and watch their friends and family members walk down the aisle to receive their diplomas, all in high definition. And I know Chairperson Washington may have taken advantage of that new opportunity as she had a high school senior graduate this past spring.
We did, family from far away.
So in addition to improving the quality and the stability of LNKTV's videos, Kurt's work has saved taxpayer dollars. Switching to fiber removed the need to replace aging network devices, saving the city over $25,000 along the way. So in his nomination letter, Beau Wolfe wrote that, quote, "Kurt and his team provided outstanding customer service and were able to complete the project quickly and efficiently." So I hope you will please join me in congratulating Kurt Helgath for his dedication to excellence and customer service on behalf of LNKTV and our city and the wonderful impact that he has made all across our city limits. And with that, I would love to invite up IS, our Chief Information Officer, Abby Ecker, to share more about Kurt's great work.
Thank you for taking a moment today to celebrate Kurt with us. I have to say, as excited as I was to see that he had gotten the award, I wasn't surprised. This is just one example of many that Kurt himself has brought to the city and our team, but he also is an excellent representative of our IS team. So thank you again. Thank you, Kurt, for everything that you do for us. Thank you, Lori, for getting to come up and celebrate with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sash.
Like to say a few words, maybe introduce your family members who are here?
My wife Lori is here to celebrate with me today. And like many people I'm sure have said, I was just doing my job. But with that, there is no way what we did there could be done without the broadband team. And Don Ferris is here as well. Don, are you in the... So Don's our Director of Broadband Connectivity in the city, and there's no way I could have done what I did for LNKTV without him and his group. Matt Vincent was also helping me with the project. I want to throw his name out there. Kyle Peterson takes care of our phones on a daily basis. Ben Faltis just left our group to be our Chief Information Security Officer, but he's crucial in our group as well. And then last but not least, Brad Weekly, my manager and mentor, I have to say thank you to him, or I wouldn't know half of what I know without him. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And let's give him another round of applause.
Well, thank you from all of council. I think we all understand that it's a team, always, always a team that pulls these things together. And because you're good team workers, you've done a phenomenal job. And as the mayor noted, I did have family watching from multiple states' graduation this spring. So thank you personally as well. Thank you. All right. We'll give them a moment.
Don't you want to stay for a public comment, Mayor?
Excuse me. We'll give them a moment to leave, and then we'll proceed with the meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Our first item on the agenda will be our consent agenda, sections one, two, and three.
All right. If there's someone to speak on either one of the items on consent, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Barb McIntyre, 555 South 10th Street, Human Resources Director. And it's my pleasure today to introduce to you Susan Sap. She has got a law practice with, let me see if I can get them all out, Klein, Williams, Wright, Johnson, and Old Father. That practice includes civil and administrative law, focusing a lot on the employment sector. She has agreed graciously so with her amount of history and experience to serve on our personnel board, or HR personnel board. She's also an adjunct professor at Dohen University and the College of Business and an adjunct professor and lecturer at UNL College of Law. So we were very lucky that she has agreed to serve on this board, and I will let her tell you a little bit about herself.
Thank you, Barb. I appreciate the opportunity to be considered for the personnel board. I'm a lifelong Lincolnite, 59 years, and at this stage of my career, I'm looking at the last decade or so of being a lawyer, and I want to look at ways to serve my community. And this jumped out as something that I thought I might be able to be able to do. I've had the good fortune to sit in all of the chairs in administrative hearings representing a party, defending an agency, or serving as the hearing officer. So I feel comfortable in that area. And most people who serve on a board don't want to be the chair. And so I bring that willingness to run hearings and rule on objections and evidentiary issues. I've been a trial lawyer for 35 years. I spend most of my time representing doctors, hospitals, universities, and employers. So with that, I would be happy to serve if you would have me do so. Thank you very much, Ms. Sap. Do any of the councilors have comments, questions? Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Chair Washington. I have no questions, just a comment. After reviewing your resume, I feel extremely lucky as the City of Lincoln to have you step up to serve in this capacity, and I just wanted to personally thank you for serving our community now. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so very much. All right.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak on an item on consent?
Anastasia Fenner waving my address. I just have a question. Where exactly for item 1C, the report from City Treasurer of City Cash on Hand, where would we find that, like, placed on file?
You can find cash on hand reports placed on file in the Finance Department. So you go to City of Lincoln, Lincoln.NE.gov, go to Finance, and then you'll find those reports placed on file.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item on consent? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Susan Sap to the City Personnel Board to fill a partial term ending June 22nd, 2026, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber. Any discussion? Please conduct the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended June 30th to 24th, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none. Let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Items 2A through 2D were introduced by Schob?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Tom Beckius. Councilman Beckius, pardon me. Any discussion? All right, please conduct the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Let's move on to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call item 4A, approving the professional services agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Consultants in Infectious Disease LLC to provide medical consultation services to the Health Department for a term of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2026.
All right, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council members. Kery Kernan, K-E-R-R-Y, K-E-R-N-E-N, Assistant Health Director with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, 3131O Street. This professional services agreement is with Consultants in Infectious Disease LLC, which provides our medical consultation services. Dr. Rademacher is our chief medical advisor and provides all sorts of medical advisory services as far as standing orders, medical consultation with communicable disease outbreaks, just anything that we need in a medical advisory capacity.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Kernan. All right, we can move to the next item.
I'll call item 4B, approving Downtown Lincoln Association 2024-2025 Maintenance and Management BID Budget and Program of Work.
Do we have the Downtown Lincoln Association present to present? Or perhaps someone from urban development? Just one moment.
Peter Heine, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I think Todd maybe, we got a parking ticket or a lost downtown, I don't know. I'm going to talk on my feet a little bit here. As you know, this BID has been going on for quite a while with DLA. Some differences are we've expanded the BID into the Telegraph District this year. We do the calculations in urban development for this district. They do a fantastic job as you drive around downtown. The planters, both above ground and in the ground, are managed by DLA. And then when it comes to snow removal on the corners and the ramps for ADA, DLA performs the service. We have a great partnership with them, and we look forward to their help to carry this contract out. Do you have any specific questions I can take back to DLA about their budget?
I did have one question. I noted in the bid a description of other parties who were part of it, so in the DLA's budget. And it looks like we're providing, the city and DLA through urban development are providing services to, on planters and snow removal around the Fed Building.
That's true.
But it doesn't look like the Fed's contribution equals the amount of expenditure. And so, just to curiosity, if that tenant is paying their fair share, are they paying their, you know, the allocation is done by how many frontage feet? So are they paying their full frontage feet? And we just calculated that? Like, we are on the short side of that?
They are not paying their, they remove that from their budget, and so we're working out a way to work with them. But for this budget, because of timing and everything, we wanted to get forward because we obviously didn't want to just ignore some blocks in the downtown. And so we wanted to make sure that those dollars were included in this budget to carry out that work. And so we're working with them to see how we can fill that gap.
All right, well, thank you for that answer. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Director Heine. You filled in quite adequately.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, the next item.
Item 4C is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July 16th through July 31st of 2024.
All right. Is there anyone here present to speak on this item? Is there anyone here who wants to speak on a claim against the city? Please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Oh, the microphone is to your...
Either side.
Either side. All right, if you just tell us your name and address.
Jamal Anderson, 3439 A Street, Unit 1, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68510.
All right. Mr. Anderson, could you please explain why you're here?
I think it was January 12th, I was doing deliveries and a snow truck had hit me. He had ran the red light when I was going through the yellow. I talked to him, he said he worked for the city. I called the city after the accident, and I told them everything that happened, and they said, it sounds like a truck that's contracted with the city. The accident happened right before school, so I didn't have time to put in a claim right then. I had to wait until now. And plus, I was hurt after the accident, and it was really hard to do anything. But I put in the claim not too long ago, and the city tells me they have no record of the accident ever happening. And I'm like, my car is wrecked, it's totaled, I can't drive it, and this is kind of frustrating. I came to this city from North Carolina, I've only been here for like two years. I'm 39, I've never been in a car accident until this incident. And I could have asked for a lawyer to help me, because the veterans, they offer lawyers, but I thought since it was like an open and shut case, obvious that the city truck hit me, I wouldn't have to be here today talking to y'all. I thought it would be handled easily, but here I am in front of y'all with all my anxiety trying to get my car fixed. And I'm not asking for any medical help, I'm going to deal with that on my own. I got a compression fracture from the accident, but the VA is helping me, I'm not asking for help for that, I just want my car fixed.
All right. Does anyone have, so, Mr. Anderson, this is how, this is how the process works. So councilors here may ask you a couple of questions. We'll also ask the city attorney to come forward and answer some questions. We may have the director from Lincoln Transportation and Utilities who oversees the snow plows and things like that. She may come forward to answer questions. At the end of those questions, we will go into a voting session. If a counselor removes your claim from the report, that means it's been set aside to be dealt with separately. That's one of the options, and we will get to, this will be the third item we vote on.
It all happened so quick, I didn't have time to really even talk to any lawyers. As soon as I put in the claim, they were like 30 days to respond, because we didn't see the accident, and then next thing I know, I'm in here. So after this, I can definitely get lawyers if I need to. The Veteran Affairs, I already talked to them, and they got lawyers for me. But I'm not letting this go. Like, my car was hit by the city.
All right, thank you. So it'll be just a few minutes before we take a vote, but we may have questions for you.
Thank you.
Do any of the councilors have comments or questions?
I've got questions.
Oh, Councilman Duden, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, when did this happen?
I believe it was January 12th.
And after it happened, did you call anybody?
I just got smacked by a snow truck, so I was a little out of it. I didn't call until I got home, and that's about when the pain kicked in. I didn't start hurting until I got home either. But I didn't, when I called the city, no one would give me any information. I don't even know the guy that hit me name. I was told that I couldn't get any information until I did a claim.
So how do you know if it was a city snow truck?
Because when I called and I asked them, I explained the truck to them. I told them it was a red truck. They said, it sounds like a truck that is contracted with the city. That's the only thing I had to go on.
So you have no contractor's name or anything like that?
I got his insurance information, because after a while, he tried to claim that I started causing the accident. He went through his insurance to try to get my information, but I told them, no. So I got his insurance, his insurance operator, whatever, but I still don't have his name or anything.
How did you get the insurance information from?
My insurance. They wouldn't help me because I was doing deliveries, but at least they gave me his information. I was doing deliveries when the accident happened, and apparently if you're doing deliveries, you have to have something called commerce or either commercial insurance, I don't remember it exactly, and I didn't have that. So my insurance isn't helping.
I'm just trying to understand the basics. So you actually did talk to the other driver?
Yes, after the accident. Like, he came up to my car.
And he gave you his insurance information?
No, we didn't do anything.
Was he plowing snow at the time?
Yes.
So that would change him from being a motor vehicle to a piece of equipment, then?
I don't know what relevance that has. It still belongs to the city, doesn't it? I mean, it still was contracted with the city.
Well, we don't know, I don't know the facts of that, so, but I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Councilman Bowers?
Okay, so, help me understand, because I'm trying to picture in my head. So like, you're in your car, you're going through an intersection, you said it was yellow, the other light was red, and then he, did he, how did he, how'd your cars collide?
My car was almost through the light, and right when it was about to turn red, that's when he came flying through. So the only way for that to happen, he had to have been driving through a red light if my light was still yellow. So he ran at the red light. I don't know if he was trying to keep up momentum, because he was plowing snow, but he ran the red light and hit me.
So then he hits your car?
I got pictures of the car, if you want to see.
That'd be wonderful. I mean, not wonderful, but that'd be good to see, you know. So you, he hits your car, and then like, what happens next? Like...
I sit there for a couple of seconds trying to figure out what just happened, because the way he hit me, I didn't see him. He hit me on the passenger side in the back. And while I was just sitting in there, because it spun me around a few times, and I hit a pole in a parking lot at a bank on the street, he got out his car and he walked up to me when I was sitting in the parking lot of the bank, still dazed from the accident. And when he got there, he was talking about he didn't see me, and then... What did he do after? I'm sorry, my memory's not the best.
Take your time.
He walked back to his car, and that's when I took a picture of the truck. So I have a picture of the truck too, which I sent to y'all. But really didn't talk that much. I didn't think my car was going to make it home, but it did, but I didn't get a lot of information from him.
And I might have misunderstood this. Did you say that you had a copy of the insurance card?
When he tried to contact my insurance, I told them, no. And then I asked my insurance, could they give me any of his information? The only thing they could really give me was his progressive number.
So you gave him your contact, your insurance information, then? Because if he contacted your insurance...
Probably during the accident, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, just so I can get a better picture, can you tell me, where was the intersection? Do you remember the cross streets?
I'm not from around here. I was doing deliveries to learn the city. I guess it was by Buffalo Wild Wings or so, because that's where my order was at, I was on my way there. It was like the downtown area where all the lights are at, I don't know.
So you were maybe near the Buffalo Wild Wings establishment in the downtown area?
Yes.
And what was the time of day?
It was in the morning. I had just started deliveries, I think. I think that was my first one.
Okay, just 8:00, 9:00?
No, because I can't start deliveries until after 9:00, so maybe 10:00.
Okay, so around 10:00 AM, and then the date was January 12th? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, okay. I think I'm going to ask a few questions of Director Elliott or the Law Department. I can give other folks first dibs, all right. Director Elliott, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Did you receive on January 12th a report from one of your contractors or a driver that they'd been in... that they'd been in an accident?
We have not, and I just saw the photo of the truck that was involved. It's clearly not a city vehicle.
Okay.
There was no GPS information that showed that we had any of our city staff in that area. Most of our contractors also have GPS on them, not all necessarily, but we also didn't show that we had any other contractors in that area as well. I'm not aware, and maybe the Law Department can provide more information, I'm not aware that we ever were provided the name of the individual. And so, other than the truck and seeing if we had records of anybody in the area, we didn't have much to go on to check on anything, but there was nothing that we had that showed we were in the area or that a contractor was in the area.
Okay, and is the photo of the truck, does it show a company's name? And if so, or some kind of insignia or logo? Is, if it does, is that a company with which the city contracts with for snow removal?
It's a, it's a normal pickup, I did not see a logo of any business on it. And so, it was a, what appeared to be a truck on an arterial, so our contractors don't plow arterial roads, that is done by our city streets. And so, I'm not sure, I don't have much more information than that.
We're just waiting for the image to come up.
There we go. So yeah, so it's just a pretty standard light fleet pickup truck with a plow on it.
But the plow is down.
Like the actual display, instead of the photo, the projector. Thank you.
Okay.
And as you can see, it appears that the blade's up, which would make sense because it's an arterial street and our city plows typically do arterial streets.
Okay, so the blade is up. Okay. And does it look like a light bar is engaged?
It does look like they have some yellow lights on top.
I tell, alright.
If I was guessing, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, alright.
And it looks like they have a snow plow in the back, so to me, it appears that it's a, someone doing private type work.
Okay, any questions from other councilors?
I have a question for City Law, and I ask this every time we have a complaint come before, or a claim come before us. What was City Law's rationale in denying this claim? If you could just walk me through that process?
Yeah, so when we receive snow plow claims, we reach out to L T U. As Director Elliott said, they have GPS information, so usually they can identify definitely if there was a city fleet vehicle that was plowing in that area and typically also if there's a contractor. If it is a contractor and we're aware of that, we will provide that name to the claimant, indicate to the claimant that they can reach out directly to that contractor for any claim damage. Obviously, if it's a city vehicle, we evaluate that further. In this case, the evaluation stopped, we didn't have a contractor or a city vehicle that we had any record of being in that location at that time.
No GPS information that indicated that?
No.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, just for, you know, my awareness for the people watching, for Mr. Anderson, where are we at in the, like, the legal process right now?
Sure, so the claims process is about to come to an end. You'll make a determination on the claim. City Law's recommendation was to deny this particular claim. Council will then vote to either approve or deny the claims report. And then after that, Mr. Anderson does have the opportunity to go into civil action, file a lawsuit if he so chooses to do.
So by us accepting the denial, that does not end it here. It just transfers it from a municipal government entity to the judicial branch.
Should he choose to exercise that right, yes.
Or that option exists still, thank you, I appreciate that.
I have another question, Director Elliott. You said that most, but not all of your contractors have GPS.
Sometimes they malfunction, sometimes they, they might have bring in some arguments that they needed additional staff that may not have had GPS. So there, I would say, we try to catch most of them, but there are times when they don't have them.
Okay, and did you ever get word of the either insurance company? Did you get, I mean, do you have information from insurance companies? Did any of that come forward to you?
We have the, we received the name of the insurance company, but we did not receive the name of the insured or of an adjuster or any contact information. So, I mean, if I have a name of an insurance company, it's a national insurance company, I can't just reach out and say, "Do you have any knowledge of this claim and all of your claims that you may have?"
Okay, and no contractor, no subcontractor came forward and said, "I had an accident today."
No.
Okay. Thank you, are there any other questions, Councilman Bowers?
Thank you, as you guys were answering that question, I had a few more. So, you said that you were reached out to by an insurance company, or you have the name of the insurance company?
So Mr. Anderson did provide us with the name of the insurance company in a supplement to his original claim. And really to us, that just emphasizes that it's not a city vehicle. So if there's an insurance, if there's an insurance company that he's been provided information with, then it just further emphasizes it wouldn't be a city vehicle. So, I mean, and it's just the name of the insurance company.
Yep, and that was what I was going to follow up with is, what is like the typical process with dealing with insurance if it were to be a contractor or if it was a city vehicle?
So if it's a-
And typical, I guess, is tough in your line of work.
Sure, so if it's a city vehicle, we wouldn't be dealing with an insurance company. If it's a contractor's vehicle in a snow plow situation, we would refer the claimant to that contractor. So we wouldn't be dealing with the contractor's insurance company.
Thank you, that's helpful information.
The individual does always have the opportunity to deal directly with that other person's insurance company as well, just as if you or I were in an accident or crash with someone else. So there, there is also that avenue as you were talking about other options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, as the claimant, you can come forward with a short rebuttal.
First off, she said that I only gave her the name of the insurance. I have the person's name that she could have called with the phone number and I called the city-
The driver?
No, the, his insurance person.
Okay.
So she made it seem like I just gave her the number to Progressive when there was an actual person she could have called with a name, Kelly Bone is her name, that was his insurance adjuster. And I called the city and I asked, "Is this y'all's truck?", and y'all told me, "Yes."
Do you remember who you spoke with? Or did you talk to someone in L T U?
I called the city phone, I talked to somebody on the phone. That's the only reason I even know about filing a claim is when they told me.
Okay. I'm just taking some notes down, okay.
Either way, I'm upsetting my ti, if it's not the city truck, you wasted all of my time.
Well, it, the red truck without a city logo doesn't appear to be a city-
When I called on the phone, the lady told me that y'all have red trucks contracted with y'all. That's why she says she thinks it was that one. And now all of a sudden, y'all don't recognize the truck at all? I'm glad the case is still open, but that's it, I just wanted to make sure it goes forward.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Anyone else would like to speak on this item or another item on claims against the city? Alright, seeing none, Madam Clerk, you can move us ahead, please.
Excuse me, we can vote on these items. Item 4A is approving the professional services agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Consultants in Infectious Disease LLC to provide medical consultation services to the Health Department for a term of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2026, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 4B is approving downtown Lincoln Associations 2024-2025 Maintenance and Management BID Budget and Program of Work, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beckius, any discussion? Seeing none?
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 4C is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July 16th through July 31st of 2024, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Schob, any discussion? Madam Clerk, you may call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Alright, we'll move forward now to Section 5 Public Hearing Ordinances, second reading.
Item 5A is text amendment 24009, request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.72.120 accessory buildings to clarify floor, area, and paragraph D and to describe exceptions not included in the maximum or expanded maximum accessory building square foot allowance.
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Here before you today with this text amendment. This proposal is coming from the Planning Department in order to clarify and clean up some language to allow for decision-making for certain situations to make more sense and to be more straightforward for both someone that's applying for a permit, building permit, as well as for staff, city staff. It became clear to us that there was an omission of a word in this section of the code dealing with floor area as related to accessory buildings and there are some limitations on how much you can have on a particular lot. And the, the term floor was not included in a certain area, table. It just said area, and so there was some ambiguity as to kind of what that meant. And so this is really just bringing that correct text into the situation. And just to be clear, this is, this came forward and became aware to us when there was a breezeway. There's square footage that was being counted against the allowed amount of floor area for accessory buildings. And so this is just basically making this change. We did go back into the record for a working group that met in 2017 that was part of that work with this topic. And so, it was clear from the notes of those meetings that it was meant to be the floor area, not just area. So, it's, for us, it's a very straightforward thing, it's somewhat of a technical change, but it does clear things up for both applicants as well as for city staff for future situations like that. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, Councilman Duden first?
What, what's, when I read this, what's the difference between buildings and structures?
It depends, depends on if we're talking about building code or not. I'm not gonna stand here and say that I'm an expert about buildings and structures, but there can be some differences in interpretation of building codes, depending on what that means. But this, this change that we're dealing with today really is trying to make sure that something like a breezeway or a covered deck or patio is not being considered part of the, the actual, an actual building that's on the, on a lot. And counting towards a square footage that has a limitation to it.
Okay, alright, I just noticed that, I think it's 5, Roman numeral 5, shall not occupy more than 100 square feet for buildings and, or, yeah, and then 600 feet for structures, the required front yard along a major street.
What I can do is I can go back and find, I know that there's some, some differences there as far as how those allowances are applied, so I can find that out for you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Alright, I see no other questions for you on this item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to comment on 5A, this text amendment? Either in favor or in opposition? Anyone here like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we may move ahead to the next.
Item 5B is text amendment 24010, request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.06.020, classification of use types by amending paragraph B, more than one main use, sub-paragraph 2, to allow more than two single-family dwellings on lots or tracks located in the 01, 02, 03, R, T, B1, 2, B3, B4, 5, H1, H2, H3, H4, I1 and I2 and I3 districts.
Welcome back.
Good afternoon, council members. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Have another kind of technical text amendment here for you. I'll preface all this for, by explaining that the, the origination of this change came from the Bridges to Hope Tiny Home Project that we're trying to get across the finish line. And we've been working through kind of the, some of the hurdles with doing a unique project like that. And one, one of the, one of the few zoning changes that Planning Department can provide assistance with here is to make this change, which during the discussions with that applicant and trying to get that project to a point where it can move forward, we have some language in the code that does not allow more than two single-family dwellings on a lot in commercial districts. And we did some research, we went back and looked at, kind of like, why was that there? And there really is no record as to why there is some affirmative reasoning behind that. And we discussed that quite a bit also with building and safety staff. And there's really not a reason for that limitation. And the reason why that matters is that RT is one of those districts that's under this proposed change to the code. The, the lot that the Bridges to Hope Project is on is zoned RT. It has already gotten its approval, that has already come through to the City Council two years ago. But there's, when we get into actual building out the site, there are some of these, there are regulations still for, for building code and for, for getting water and sewer to each building and things like that. So what we, what we found out is that this limitation is not allowing them to move forward the way that they have their lot set out, which is 20 tiny units, single-family units on one lot. And so we've, we've been working through how we get infrastructure to them and pipes and things like that. We're getting close to being done. This change is needed technically because as of right now, they would not be able to do more than two on their one lot. So, this isn't gonna be a big, make a big change. It's one, one little piece to the puzzle of trying to allow for unique projects in commercially zoned districts that are trying to get some things done. So we are hopeful that this might allow for some open doors to allow for other things to happen, similar to the Bridges to Hope Project. So with that, I will stop and see if there's any questions.
Are there any questions? I have one.
Yep.
With this change in the code, L M C, would this desire for more than two single-family homes on one lot require a special use permit, a CUP, PUD? Will it require some kind of permitting or is this just going to be allowed by rights?
So, very likely that would need some type of, it depends on the district itself, but it would very likely need to have some, some type of approval in that sense to have a unique plan set out. And that's what the applicant in this case has already gotten that approval. And now this is the actual implementation stage of trying to get that to happen.
But in the future, they, they would have this approval by text and then they would get their permit?
Correct.
Thank you.
So that, if it was a similar type of project, they would have, they'd have this hurdle out of the way with this change.
The allowance would already be-
Yep.
-provided, thank you very much, alright. Seeing no other questions from councilors, I'll ask everyone else.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to comment on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we can move forward.
I'll call item 5C, text amendment 24007, request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Section 27.62.100 Retail- hundred, retail sales and services use group in section two seven point six, two point one ten, food and drink establishments use group to convert special permits for on and off, uh, excuse me, on, permits for on and off sale alcohol to conditional uses thereby repealing section two point two, twenty-seven point six, three point six eighty, sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises in section two seven point six, three point six eight five, sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption off the premises.
Three's a charm.
Welcome back.
Happy to be in front of you again, uh, council members. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, five 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 South Tenth Street. Um, very pleased to have this in front of you today for your, your consideration. This is an item that has been under discussion for quite a few years now, um, at least in the Planning Department. And, um, what this is, is it really, um, makes a change in the code to allow for, um, going from special permits to conditional approvals for, um, sale of alcohol, both on sale and off sale, um, premises. Uh, this really will help us allow for the process for the state liquor license that you see very often in front of you, um, to align the timing of that. And the process will align much better by having a conditional approval possible at the, for the zoning side of this at the city level. The reason for that is that a special, special permit requires a public hearing. It takes about thirty days to process that, um, from application point to having a hearing with Planning Commission. Main point here is that since, uh, the major change in two thousand and four, so twenty years ago, that basically locked in the requirements for the special permit, there really wasn't any, um, variability allowed. Basically how we've handled these since then is that if, if they could not meet the, the regulations of getting the, the permit, they did not move forward with their application. So because of that, we've had a hundred and eighteen out of a hundred and eighteen special permits for sale of alcohol approved, um, because there's a presumption of, of approval now that we have it kind of locked in that they have to meet the regulations or they do not move forward. This will really help us make sure that when you see a license come before you, uh, going through the state process, which also is still going to be required, you will know, we will have, have, we, we can determine that very quickly and you will know if there is, uh, if it's going to meet the local zoning regulation or not. And so I know that there's been confusion and frustration at the stage of going, coming in front of the City Council at times. Um, and then it just is a, would it be much more streamlined? So also save money for the applicant and time, um, and it would save staff time as well. So, um, for all those reasons, um, we are proposing that we make the approval for these, the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on and off premises, conditional in nature. Want to be very clear that this does not change the rules that they have to abide by to get approval. So they're the same rules. We're just basically saying that we already are using this as if it was a conditional permit because the rules are pretty much locked in. Um, so it makes a lot of sense to do that for all those reasons stated. I will note that we did, uh, go to the mayor's neighborhood roundtable in July and that was, it was received with general, you know, approval. Um, it was one, one person noted, so you're basically getting rid of a bureaucratic process and having, getting the same outcome. And I said, yes, that's pretty much what's happening here. So, um, as we have that discussion with people, people pretty much nod their heads and it's a good idea. So with that, um, with my recommendation, along with the Planning Commission to approve this, I can answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Carey. Um, are there any questions or comments from councilors? Seeing none, I'll ask if anyone here? Uh, if anyone here would like to comment on this proposal, either in favor or in opposition? Is anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none? Thank you, Director Carey. Uh, and I know this will make it easier for those folks, uh, applying, coming before us and then being turned back partway while they go back to planning. So I appreciate the efficiency of this and as you said, it will save them time and money. So, thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk, uh, we can move forward.
Our next section is section six, resolutions, first readings are item six A and six B. Ordinances, first reading and related resol- resolutions are section seven is item seven A. Section eight is our pending list date certain, items eight A through eight W.
All right. Um, before we leave this section, um, I, uh, would entertain a motion to remove, uh, an item from pending, eight A actually, from pending.
Madam Chair, I would go ahead and move, a motion to remove from pending status, item eight A.
I need a second.
Second?
Second, Carlson, thank you. All right. Um, discussion. Um, I'm going to have Director Elliott come forward to explain.
I need to call the vote?
Oh, right. We have to call the vote, I'm sorry.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
That motion is carried seven zero.
All right. Now I will have Director Elliott to come forward and explain why we removed this from pending, so that-
Yes.
She may present to this, present this to us again this afternoon.
Thank you very much, and I apologize. Um, as we were going back through, we noticed a typo in one of the slides that we had last week. And just for clarity purposes, we wanted to make sure that everyone had sufficient time. So as part of the budget hearing, as we do each budget hearing, this public, public budget hearing inclu- includes the Lincoln Transportation Utilities Proposed Budget and Capital Improvement Program, that it fulfills the statutory requirements for the state of Nebraska's one and six-year Streets and Highways Program. Residents have ten days from today to submit comments, so they can submit all comments, statements, suggestions through August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and they can submit those to our, our Streets, um, and Maintenance Operation Superintendent, and that's Tim Byrne. And they can either do that via mail at nine forty-nine West Bond, Suite two hundred, or they can do that by email. Um, and this is, um, applies to feedback on streets and highways, not other parts of the CIP or the budget. And again, this is a state statutory requirement, and we just wanted, because of the typo, to make sure everyone was clear and everyone had sufficient time to present any comments on the Streets' one and six plan. So I appreciate it. The Total Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty reflects an average annual expenditure of nearly thirty-four point four million dollars for our Streets program. So, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to reopen this.
Thank you, uh, Director Elliott. And just for curiosity, where exactly was the typo?
So we had the wrong date and we also had the, uh, thirty-four point four, I believe it said forty-one.
Okay.
And that was last budget. The thirty-four point four is this budget.
All right. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any discussion from councilors? Any questions for clarification?
No ma'am, I would go ahead and move, uh, delay action to eight twenty-six, twenty-four.
Okay. And to return to pending?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beckius. A second?
Second.
Second, Tom Duden, Councilman Duden. Um, Madam Clerk, let's call the vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. So noted.
Next is our section nine, which is our pending list items, our items nine A through nine H.
All right. And that is the agenda. Um, because this is the second Tuesday of the month, second Monday of the month, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so during the open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. Um, open microphone sessions will be held on August twelfth and twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and as noted at the front of the agenda, I ask that each of the commentators strive for civility and allow the meeting to proceed. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Keshawn Munchlow, three two three North Forty-fourth Street. Uh, they say if you want to hear the ground news, ask the people on the ground. So I'm going to start this off with, uh, journalist down in Gaza right now, uh, Bisan Iyoda. She is a Palestinian journalist sharing the truth as of right now.
... massacre, the worshipers massacre. So, um, the civil defense did not find any completed body, non-completed bodies for more than hundred people are killed. Uh, even current bodies, they did not find, so they had to do this. They gathered human pieces, um, in, in, in bags, in plastic bags. And, um, since the average weight for a normal human is seventy kilometer, kilograms, let, let us say, they, uh, gathered every seventy kilograms in one plastic bank, uh, bag and handle the bag to the relatives or to the family who are still alive. And for children, they gathered, um, between thirty to thirty-five kilograms of human pieces in each bag, so they handle it also to the mothers, fathers, or the relatives. But despite this, they did not find enough human pieces. This is simply because of the new weapon that the Israeli army used to commit this massacre. The army dropped three bombs. Uh, each bomb, uh, weighed, uh, more than two thousand pounds.
So what, uh, she was talking about was, so it's New York Times piece, Gazans described carnage after strike on school turned shelter, the dead were all in pieces. Palestinians expected the damage following Israeli airstrike on the school that was sheltering displaced people in Gaza City. When Hassan Alagani arrived at the scene shortly after an Israeli airstrike on the Gaza school turned shelter, he said he found a scene of carnage unlike any he has seen in the past ten months of war. A prayer hall strewn with bodies and body parts over the two floors. A resident of Gaza City where the attack on Saturday took place, Mr. Alagani has been documenting daily life in Gaza during the war, but this was the worst thing he had witnessed, he said. The strike hit the prayer hall when it was filled with more than two hundred people before the call to worship had sounded about, at about four thirty AM, according to the Gaza Civil Defense Service. The Civil Defense said the Israeli attack killed more than ninety people, including women and children, two doctors at the hospital that received many of the casualties gave slightly lower tolls. In aftermath survivors, some of them children were stifting through rubble and collecting body parts, witnesses said. The dead are all in pieces, said Mr. Al, uh, Almagani. We don't know if they will be able to save the wounded, it's just a matter of time. So what Bisan was talking about earlier was, what they did to identify how many people were killed was because there were so many body parts spread all over in the massacre, they just weighed seventy pound, or seventy kilograms each, and then for the children, a lower weight. We are a part of this, these continuous ongoing massacres. This just happened Saturday. The types of bombs that are being used to kill these, I mean, in this, in this incident, it was mostly women and children. I mean, you gotta be a special type of evil to wait until right before the prayer service and then bomb a school that is sheltering people. And of course, uh, Israel probably says that Hamas was there. But it's right before prayer and majority of them, women and children were killed, unless you believe like children or, or babies are in Hamas, uh, this is clearly not self-defense and this is clearly massacre, evil, and we are a part of this. I again, come here this Monday because some of the bombs are created here in Lincoln. We have a power to do something about this and to stop these massacres from happening and stop the killing of people who they don't deserve this. They were there and they were just praying and then they got killed. And then their family members came by and collected the body parts. But this is a story that keeps happening every single day in the Gaza Strip. Please do something about it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello?
Good afternoon.
I'm Tracy Axmit, seventy-two oh one Willow Avenue, a licensed architect, not trained in medicine. I research and write about local impact of global agendas currently focused on propaganda and false flag attacks. I'm here again today because of the city's COVID response and many years of research into healing. Because of COVID, my intu- intuition about the harms of wireless technology were refreshed and I set out to learn more. I then met a friend who, after many di- misdiagnosis, was diagnosed with, in twenty thirteen, with burns caused by radio frequency radiation from a smart meter. Took her several months to accept her diagnosis and to begin trea- treating and healing her burns. Since the invention of electricity, doctors have recorded the benefits and the harms of electricity's electromagnetic frequencies or E, what we call EMFs, right? One example you might remember is the harm caused by the X-ray shoe fitting fluoroscope of the nineteen twenties that took over fifty years to outlaw. While there are many EMF benefits, um, industry and independent scientists disagree on safe levels. Compare the harmful effects, whoop, that's not going to show, anyway, the harmful effects, um, of electricity recorded by eighteenth-century physicians to COVID. These are the eighteenth century versus what was, uh, the symptoms in this twenty twenty-three American, Scientific American article. Effects like shortness of breath, chest pain, and respiratory infections. Since twenty twenty, I've learned that an international commission and the Federal Communications Commission, does it deny such adverse health effects exist? However, as Arthur Firstenberg explains in his book, The Invisible Rainbow, I don't think you'll be able to see that, but I'll give you copies.
Yeah, you can.
Oh, that's okay. I don't want to waste my time. Um, our world is an electrical circuit. Artificial pulse signals like those from wireless devices and cell towers disturb this circuit. And in the body, Dr. Gerald Pollak discovered that this electrical circuit forms a gel that behaves like a battery delivering minerals and other components on a circuit to the very smallest of capillaries. Pollak calls this gel the fourth phase of water. And, um, the FCC protects our devices from static noise, but our city, um, county legal counsel, uh, will advise us that the FCC, which is not a health agency, actually sets health and safety standards for RF radiation emissions and prohibits local government from considering the health effects of cell tower radiation in zoning decisions. To track the RF radiation changes in Lincoln, I began this monitoring, um, which I'll also have a copy, um, in my neighborhood in twenty twenty-one, comparing my findings to the twenty sixteen European Academy for Environmental Medicine guidelines. Here are the readings, um, you can see there, when you get your copy, they're, um, according to the locations in my neighborhood. Um, and the red, of course, the green, um, are the areas which are better areas to the yellow and red indicating potential for higher risk in those areas. And those are across the three years that I've monitored. So I would say, ask, please do read the warning that came with your cell phone and consider that, as I reported last month, about the fluoride, RF radiation is an environmental toxin. And regarding the fluoride that I did talk about, I'm glad to report today that the draft fluoride regulation change has been posted to the Secretary of State's docket with a public hearing scheduled for September eighteenth. So very good news. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ax.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon.
Hello, uh, Tulley, I withdraw my address for safety. So I never really believed that the- So I never really believed that the five minutes we have here going to really change your mind, your thoughts, or your opinions on anything. But we try to keep coming back, and hopefully the accumulating of the five minutes will do something. However, I do appreciate if you really focus and give us the five minutes here to really listen to what we have to say here. So it's been three hundred and ten days of a man-made horror, massacre after massacre. And I, I've been having a lot of like anger and frustration and wonder like, how can these things happen and keep going? Some of them did turn into hatreds, like, like, before there was time that we come to you guys with yelling and anger. And I didn't like it, like, I didn't, I don't want to make yous become my enemy. I don't want to make anyone become my enemy because, like, you cannot make a sound with one hand. So if I hate someone, it's hurt them, but also it hurt myself. Recently, I found something good. It's, this book right here is called Peace Begin Here by Zen master Thet Nye Khan. He's a pretty well-known Zen master. The book talks about Palestinian and Israeli listening to each other. I highly recommend this book. You can find it online, it's fourteen dollars, but have a lot of information that's going to change a lot of things. So I'm going to summarize two big things in the book. First is violence will create more violence. In even like a million years, I will never for once believe that whenever the government say, "One more bombs," and we will have peace. Bombs never bring peace. We're all connected in a human family. So let's say in your family, brothers or sister, they fight each other. You're not going to come to one person and say, "He and I killed that person." Or hit something, throw at them. You're going to stop them and see what caused the fight and figure that out. So same here, sending bombs to a country and tell them to drop it to another country, not going to bring peace to anyone. The struggling is so real that you've been seeing that, we've been showing that for the Palestinian, but it's the same for the Israeli. They doesn't have peace here either. How can you have peace when you know pretty close to here this bombing happened, and there can be something happen right now on their homes too. So one thing he mentioned in here that really stick to me is human beings is never our enemy. So you're not my enemy, I'm not your enemy, it's never going to be us. It's the ignorance, the hatred, the discrimination, the thing that, in the medical terms, you can think of it as like a virus that infected a person. So if that person infected by hatred or ignorance, we're not going to kill that person because they got sick. We're going to cure them, not kill them, but cure them. The second thing is peace begin right here and right now with us. So there's no point for us to come to you every Monday to talk about these things if you yourself don't have the peace in you. We need the peace material to build relationship, to bring it to work, to the people we work for. So today, after you come home, maybe walk on the grass with barefoot, really feel the freshness in it, hold a cup of tea and feel the warmth of it, really focus on the here and now. And if you ask yourself, "Do you deserve it?" I say you do. Everyone's here do, and everyone in the Middle East do. Everyone deserve peace. This is very precious, but at the same time, also very simple. We, in the, in this century, we've been always like run, running and running and running all the time, so busy focusing on profits and power, but we forgot that peace is really simple and it's right here. And we need to have it in us in order to bring it to our people, to our city. So I really hope you can read this book. Really hope if you can make time to talk to us in person one day, have a really mutual conversation back and forth, and really listen to what we have to say. And yeah, maybe the Lincoln Manufacturing Council not focusing on working with General Dynamics is the least we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the name of the book?
Peace Begins Here, Peace Begins Here.
Peace Begin Here by Thet Nye Khan. He's actually wrote this book back in two thousand and three, and based on the retreat that been going on. Every year, they bring a group of Palestinian and a group of Israeli come and have a retreat and talk to each other and really reconcile. Have peace in them. The belief is, the bigger the group get, the better. And if we have enough of those people that making peace, we have peace one day in this world. And it's possible, I believe it's possible.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak this evening? Welcome.
One moment, please. Well, my name is Anna S. Dufner, I'm gonna withhold my address for safety reasons. I just, again, want to bring some things to your attention because it seems as though you have not had any sort of change of heart. It seems that you still do not really care about this issue. You do not want to call for a ceasefire after over three hundred days of this carnage. So perhaps maybe a little point of view is in order, a little point of view of like what it's like to, you know, be directly targeted perhaps? So this is just a person walking, hopefully. Lincoln, Nebraska facilitates what's going on here. We are directly culpable for this. When is it going to be possible to talk about an actual ceasefire? Why won't Lincoln bring itself to try to end the carnage? Because all you have to do is talk to people? All you have to do is get a little creative? And if you can't, if you cannot bring yourself to discuss any of this, you need to step aside. You need to remove yourself from public because it is clear that you are only here to cause harm. And if you cannot stop causing harm, you should not be here anymore. The people on this council, as well as the mayor, have received money from places like Bath Iron Works. Who's Bath Iron Works, you ask? That is a subsidiary of General Dynamics that gave money to our mayor. So are you scared of what Larian is going to say and do? Or are we gonna actually attempt to get something done? Because it is incredibly disrespectful for all of you to stand up here and to demand us to be civil with you and to be polite to you while we see actively the people that are being harmed by Lincoln. You have the control. We see you utilize it all the time. It is incredibly, like, gut-wrenching to see you like close your eyes while we're up here in feign some sort of sadness for the people that you're seeing die. But the truth is, your actions speak louder than words. So either do something or step aside and say that you are someone who is a coward, who is afraid to stand up for what is right. How many dead bodies do you need to see? It is thousands, a hundred thousand, more than half the population of Lincoln. Bombs that touch the hands of people that the city of Lincoln usher into places like General Dynamics are killing people. You're making Lincoln less safe. We have a culture that is okay, and you are putting the culture out there, right? You are all allowing this genocide to take place, and you are completely silent about it. And do not seem to care that Lincoln literally is ushering people into these jobs that make bombs that kill people. The Lincoln Manufacturing Council, with the Lincoln Partnership for Economic Development, ushers people in to make bombs. Why do we care more about these like handful of jobs of bomb makers instead of, I don't know, making sure that there's no homeless people sleeping on the streets or under bridges? There's so much money that gets taken from Lincoln and just ushered into war. So step aside. Acknowledge that you can't or refuse to do anything publicly. Understand your own shame and step away because that would be you beginning the process of stopping the harm. If you can't help but pull that trigger, walk away. Let someone else come in who maybe has a little bit more courage than you. Because if you can't be the peace, you will never be the peace. So you need to leave.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment this evening?
Roy Helm. I identify with the pronouns of he and him. I reside at twenty-seven fifty South Thirteenth Street, which is land that was stolen fair and squarely from the Oto, Missouri people. I have a hard time with what I was going to say this afternoon. After last meeting, I, I found it very disturbing that members of our council were personally attacked, called names, and threatened. And it reminded me of a number of years ago when we had a group of people in here protesting about mask mandates and COVID procedures that the city took. And it was also a lot of hateful and angry and vitriolic dialogue. And it was reprehensible. And I find all such dialogue in these chambers reprehensible, no matter what the cause is or what the emotions are. I do appreciate the call to being civil in these chambers. I don't disagree that a ceasefire should occur in Gaza immediately. It should never have started. But the fact is that it's our federal government that has control over arms deals and brokers those arms deals with Israel. It is, General Dynamics is manufacturing components for the bombs. But would we feel better if we shut that plant down and it moved to Suresco, Wahoo, Iowa? I mean, the fact remains, those arms are going to be built. Do we put?
Please don't, excuse me, I can handle this.
I didn't interrupt you. We don't seem to think twice about Hornaday Manufacturing in Grand Island, largest ammunition factory in the world, or in the United States. Those bullets kill people. So I, I hope that our council can take some weight off their shoulders that not all of their constituents put the burden of what's happening in Gaza on your shoulders. It's, it is everybody's responsibility. Have we all contacted, if we're against that action, have we contacted our, our state senators, our national senators and state representatives, our governor, our president, vice president? Have we, have we contacted all these people? There are other groups, it's not just Lincoln, Nebraska, that is going to affect change. If, even if you do decide to, or the city decides to demand a ceasefire, what impact is that going to have except that now we can feel better about ourselves because, well, we live in a town that spoke out? I would certainly like to see that, but I'm not, I'm not going to come here and demand it. I know there's a lot involved because you are represented to represent, or you are elected to represent all of us. There is more than one voice in this community, there's more than one opinion. I'm so very glad that there's a message of peace and love coming from the constituency. And I hope that will prevail because that is how we're going to succeed and survive in this world. It's a violent world, it's an angry world, and somehow we have come to a place in our, in our society where it's okay to verbally accost somebody, to bring verbal violence into a proceeding. It's not acceptable, it, it doesn't accomplish anything. And if anything, the only thing it might do is take away from the imagery and the horror of what's being presented. So I do thank all of you for your service. I trust you to make good decisions. And if you make decisions that I don't agree with, some of you know that I will come forward and speak to that. But that's part of our process, and that's my right is to come forward and speak to you. But I don't come here in anger, I come here in support and a hope for a brighter tomorrow and a, and a future that is filled with joy and love. So thank you, and keep doing your work for us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
One second.
Bekias, no, I'm so sorry, Duden, Carlson.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bekias?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.